Say what he was. I don't know. Well, we'll just move forward.
She liked being there with us.
Oh, yeah.
She would be.
I've heard it too bad.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fifty-nine.
Here's your mayor, I'm sorry. It's the chair. No, it's the chair.
Okay, I'm going to call the Loudoun County Commission Workshop for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three to order. First up is public comments, Brian Beck.
All right, I am here to discuss an issue that I have with the Loudoun Public Library. I really kind of feel like I'm wasting your all's time, but since I get a letter from the county attorney, I feel that I have no other obligation but to come and address you folks. Back in June, I had very bad experiences at Loudoun Public Library taking my son to the story hour. He was treated very brutally by one individual, over the top rudely by this individual. Then I was treated derogatory by another individual. Then a third individual was very corrupt, in my opinion, by trying to entrap me into an assault charge. Okay? The library does not want to solve this problem. I have talked to the librarian, I have sent a letter to the librarian. The only thing that I received back is a letter from the county attorney. So if I'm facing the county attorney letter, that means I have to come and address you folks. I really, really feel like there's nothing that you guys can do, but since you provide the funding for the library, and really, it's not even involves the library, it involves the member, these three members of the Friends of the Library group, it doesn't even involve the library. I have become upset with the librarian because she refuses to do anything about it. I have become upset with the county attorney because his letter has taken my words, twisted them, taken them out of context. I understand this is what attorneys do, but I don't appreciate that, trying to basically make it look like it is all my fault. So I'm not only perturbed in the county government with the county attorney, but whoever in county government, whether it's person or persons who authorized this, I don't feel like the county attorney can be authorized by the librarian, so obviously, either this body here, or the mayor, or somebody in that capacity, has authorized this, and I just totally don't appreciate that. Give you the rundown of the story to try to hopefully not go into too much and waste everybody's time more than I am. So at the story hour for kids, I'm in the back row, last table, sitting there with another father, who I had asked if, "Do you want to attend with your son?" Said, "Yeah, great." So two of us attend. Librarian's up there reading Paddington Bear, okay? Volunteers everywhere, never this many volunteers. Now, I feel that there was this many volunteers this week because the previous week, she had complete chaos, she had a complete overbooking of kids come in, many younger than what this was advertised for. And of course, if you're going to do that, they're going to have chaos. Very few volunteers that week. Following week, attendance goes down to normal levels, but get the volunteers just through the roof. So me and this other father are sitting in the last table, behind us is only a walkway and a checkout desk. So we're in the back, back, back. He turns to me, whispering now, says, "You know, when we leave here, I'm kind of worried, I got to take my son to the dentist, and I'm kind of worried how he's going to act, you know, because he's got to have some work done." And I turned to him, I said, "Yeah, I know, we go through the same thing with my son." About the time I finished my statement, back to him, whispering the whole time, volunteer standing off to our right, leaning up against bookcases, leans across to our table, gets directly in our faces, in our personal space, puts her finger to her lips to go, "Shh, stop talking, you are being too loud." And me and him are just sitting there with our mouths hanging open, because we can't believe the rudeness. I mean, it's not just, "Sir, gentlemen, can you guys please calm, you know, keep it down," whatever, it's not anything nicety-nice like this, it's in-your-face rude and hateful. So we stand there, or sit there, a couple minutes, our mouths wide open, can't believe, finally, we start looking each other, saying to each other, "What, how are we being too loud?" Again, whispering. So she does it again. At this point, I start saying, "How are we being too loud?" Meanwhile, the woman in front of us, at the table in front of us, turns around and says, "It's because you guys have deep voices." Excuse me, I'm sorry that we are men, and now, you take a statement like that, and you turn it around, and you say, "It's because you have an accent voice," say to a Hispanic member of our community, or Eastern European member of our community, heads are going to roll right then and there. You say something derogatory about a woman's voice to her, heads are going to roll. At this point, just sitting there. Now, I'm getting mad, and I'm still mad, you know, it's been, we're coming up on, you know, a month and a half or so, I'm not a happy camper. So finally, I decide to start saying to this woman, like I said, "What is the problem?" Not really just getting, be quiet. She decides she's going to go around the bookcase and have a conversation herself. No, no, hypocrisy ends there. I get up, go around, interrupt her conversation, tell her how rude she is. And as I'm telling her how rude, of course, I'm talking with my hands pointing, gesturing, we got another volunteer standing off my shoulder about like this far, and all of a sudden, she goes, "Whoa, whoa, 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 stop, don't, don't you dare." And of course, I'm not stupid, I know she's trying to play that I try to hit her, or whatever. I don't, I'm having none of that, and put it into that. Go back, table, reading's over, kids are doing their craft, I'm trying to help my son, plus another kid that I had brought with us with their craft, and I get constant interrupted by these people trying to get between me and my son, and I keep telling them how rude they are. Before I leave, I tell the librarian, go back the next day, have another talk with the librarian about it, just basically, she says she's sorry. That doesn't cut it. These three women, or whatever they are, I don't care, they need to go. They cannot be volunteering, representing the library, the members of the Friends of the Library, or whatever group, that's all I want, is those three to totally hit the bricks. That's, I guess, too much, because now I get a letter, county attorney, taking all the words out of my letter, out of context, basically telling me it's my fault. Now, timeline, again, I go back to totally love librarian, my peace of mind. About a week later, I send my letter requesting these three are removed. Two weeks go by, no response. I'm sure you all seen the sign I put up on the side of the road. Sign one goes up. Friday of that week, I get the county attorney letter, sign two goes up. And I, trust me, I got a lot of road frontage right there, I can keep putting signs up. And I'm not, it's not anything hateful, I don't think you people are involved in one way, of the county attorney sending me a letter, I don't really think you people can do anything about it, but you hold the purse strings, so if that's the kind of treatment people, patrons of the library, taxpayers of myself, I'm not the highest taxpayer of the land, but a certain percentage of pennies on the dollar come from my taxes to the library. So I'm here to basically let, I wish the county attorney was here, you know, I'm letting, I'm here to say, "I do not appreciate this, I do not appreciate my words being taken out of context," and basically said, "That is all my fault, because you talked first." Well, first off, there's no law against talking to the library, and two parents that are sitting in the back, the back of the row, can't whisper to themselves two or three sentences without someone jumping in their face, then we have a problem. And we're going to allow these three members to stay on the library, members of the Friends of the Library Board, or whatever it is, we're going to allow them to stay there? Well, how long is it going to be until they really, really step in it? With somebody of a person of color, or a woman, you know, I'm not saying what they did to me is the biggest, biggest thing of discrimination, but it's discrimination, we can't have a double standard, we can't say, you can't say this to these people over here, but it's quite all right, you say it to this guy over here. We can't have the double standards, we cannot have these people volunteer, especially with children, you know? Me, the other father, are not going to return with our children, and like I said, I was also taking a third child with me, then I'm going to start returning to the library. You know, and that's the other thing, I say in my letter, "I'm not returning to the library," and what am I told? "You can return, but if you cause a disruption, you'll be arrested." Well, that's basically telling me, if I look at a fly on the table cross-eyed, well, then I'm going to be pulled out of there, right? And also, to make sure that I understand that the attorney's letter is, "We mean business," we send it once, first-class mail, and the same exact letter, certified letter, you know? So certified mails usually, "We mean business." And I do not appreciate the library. I, I have no problem with the library, she's always been nice in there. I don't know what she told these volunteers, why the crackdown, why the in-the-face, why the rudeness, and then individual two, why she's got to get derogatory, and then individual three's got to do a setup job. I'm not having it, they need to go. Now, like I said, I feel like I'm wasting your all's time, but you get a letter from the county attorney, I don't think there's much choice but to come down here and speak. Any questions?
Sorry for what happened, I will take it up with Buddy tomorrow morning. I can assure you, that letter didn't come from the commission.
I didn't, I don't think that, I didn't think ever that it came from the commission. I, I figured if anybody, it was the mayor authorized it, and that just proves to me, I mean, no offense to the mayor, but that proves to me, the mayor's lost his way. If he can't pick up the phone, call me and say, "Hey, you know, we got your letter, let's talk about it," or even walk across the street, or drive across the street, I'm not a hard person to find. The librarian, she knows where I live, and she can come, you know, she could, why, and that's the other thing, why is it now becoming an issue for the county mayor and the attorney? Why is the library not the ones solving the problem? They should be the ones solving the problem, not the county attorney, not the county mayor, not the county commission, library should be solving the issue, but they refuse to. So I got to come and waste your all's time, and all these people's time.
It's not a waste of time.
You're not wasting time.
No, well, I mean, that's just how I personally feel that.
But we need, we need to be aware.
This is not an issue that the county commission should be handling, but like I said, you all hold the wallet, so maybe it's time to look at, shut the place down. I'm not, I'm not an advocate for shutting the library down, but if this is the way they're going, and the few people that have actually stopped me when I'm out mowing the grass, and asking, "Hey, is that your signs over there?" This is what they've told me, we have been treated brutally at the library. Now, I don't know if they understand that I'm talking about the Friends of the Library Group, or the library themselves, but that's the consensus of the few people that have actually stopped and talked to me, that's what they're telling me. We've been treated, one lady even said to me, she said, "Is this about story hour?" And I thought, well, maybe she was there. She says to me, she said, "I've stopped in there to ask about the story hour, and I was told, 'There's a flyer on the door, can't you read?'" So it's not just me, it's a common, common issue and problem, I think that a lot of people are having. Now, whether they understand that I'm, my problem's with the members of the Friends of the Library, and they might have a problem with the library, that I can't speak on, but that's what I'm here for.
I refer your concerns to the library board.
Does anybody want my letter, or the attorney letter? No? I'll give it to you. You can see exactly what I wrote, and exactly what he wrote.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I know a lot of people who live in a truck.
Rich Anquin.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about a funding agenda. Item five, specifically, subset P, consideration of removing Pat Hunter from the Solid Waste and Public Records Committee.
Actually, item six.
I'm sorry?
Actually, it says five.
Miss Number.
You got two, five.
Miss, Miss Number.
Says five on here.
I know, it's a typo. Six items.
Anyway.
And a six B.
What I'm going to tell you is my personal observations of having attended meetings and/or documentation that I could produce if necessary. I'm not here to chastise anybody, or make waves with anybody, but I think that particular item has no merit. Here's why. Public records. Back in January, when there was a meeting, and Mr. Waller was nominated by Mr. Shaver to be the chairman, and a vote was taken, but the six people there came out as a tie. Three for Mr. Waller, three for Pat. Mr. Shaver tried to have it re-voted again, which was not acceptable. And Hank Sledge, the judge, said, "We're done." But from that meeting, Mr. Waller's now co-chair. I don't think so. It wasn't legitimate, and three to three is a tie, and you do not get to be elected at any. So I wanted a meeting minutes. Mr. Shaver made himself the secretary. For two months, I had to request, 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 and the way I got them was from Hank Sledge himself, which supports what I just told you. And then this little story about the storage and cleaning. Fee holders tell this commission and that commission what particular records they want cleaned, stored, and saved. There's a whole bunch of stuff I can talk about, most of it secondhand, so I can't be emphatic, other than it's secondhand information, but I believe it. Pat was the only one on that commission that went to fee holder, fee holder, fee holder, arranging for them to show up and decide what records they wanted, what records they want cleaned, and what records they want to destroy. Now, some of those are out, they may be back in two weeks, they may be back in two months. There is no reason for anyone to destroy those records that were selected by those fee holders, and there's no reason that they should be hidden in the bank building up the street with no public access. No one can go in there except the person authorized, Steve, or some other people who may have access. Supposed to be public records. Can't get them, can't see them. And it also pulls over into the solid waste. So I'm going to move on to solid waste anyway. In April of this year, Mr. Waller was elected chairman. Ms. Hunter was elected last August, and four of you joined that committee on the full understanding that we didn't like the contract, I personally didn't like it, and I know most of you didn't, and that we were going to do something about it. Well, it's a a full year later, we haven't done a damn thing. And we allow the Republic people to continue violating pieces of that contract. Here's one. The bond, remember the bond we had left here? The lawyer said, "Oh, we got to win-win-win." Except you didn't realize, you only got a half a loaf, not a full loaf. Eight point four, not thirteen point four. The other five was never, ever going to be Republic's responsibility. Why should it be? Once they're done, once they close out that landfill, why would they stay here for the next fifty to eighty years? That's the county's responsibility.
That was done by the Solid Waste Commission, that was done by the Solid Waste Commission that was sitting before anybody from County Commission joined it.
I agree.
Okay, so you need to address that to the people that actually did it, not us.
I, I understand that. The only person on that committee today is Pat Hunter, who has that kind of knowledge, skills, and retention, she's a walking encyclopedia. You can get a document for her that fast, as far back as twenty-some-odd years. But let me go back to the bond. I'm not saying that you guys did anything wrong.
Well, it's coming across that way.
As soon as they signed that damn contract, there was a bond pro offer. It wasn't thirteen point five, it was eight point five. I got the document. And I sat in that meeting, and I said, "Time out. There should be two, a million for operating, and eight point five for closure costs." "Oh, oh," they said. Within thirty days, that got corrected. Okay. So here we are again. That bond was supposed to be here in June. It was here in May, we didn't see it until July. Same damn thing, nine point four, not one and eight. Here it is. Same kill game. That's just one of them. How about the audit that Richard Hill is doing? When Pat took over, we found out that we never signed the paperwork for doing the audit, which was supposed to be done in June of the year, not August. And everyone on that commission got a letter from Pat describing that process. So we approved in September a contract with him, after three letters from the controller's office that we never saw either, saying, "You guys don't do this, we're going to take their all off that committee by law." When Mr. Hill came back and said, "I'll do the audit, but I can't start until December." Obviously, he had other commitments and plans. Okay, so now, we're six months in, past the time that it's supposed to be done, and we don't see the damn thing until May of this year. By that time, we've already hired a lawyer, some of you have left, some people have been replaced. And we seem to be treading water. Not only do we not have that finished, it'll be September, possibly, by feeding the information back to the lawyer, the lawyer feeding it to Hill, Hill bringing it back with twelve copies, maybe in September, maybe October. And what's the process that we just failed on? Same thing for two thousand twenty-three. We did not go out for a code, we did not sign a contract with him and the controller's office, and we're three months late again. It's not Pat's fault. She had nothing to do with it, she told everybody about it, and we just didn't do anything. Part one, permit, that's the most screwed up thing I've ever seen. Republic wanted to start it back in December of last year. We couldn't do it because we haven't had a lawyer. Got the lawyer hired in February. She hired a consultant. We wanted them to tell us what Republic put in that phase one, and was it valid, or did it hurt us in any shape, manner, or form? Well, we're here in August, haven't got results, haven't seen the consultant. They spent six months doing work on that permit that we never authorized, but they had no choice. If you wanted to get a timeline to finish by the end of this year with phase one, phase two, they had to start. Now, was that acceptable to anybody? Maybe not. But as a functioning entity, what were they supposed to do? Keep waiting till we drifted, 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 drifted. That particular phase one was voted on three times. Unfortunately, two of them were wrong, because the people on the committee weren't authorized to vote. We not only voted, we got a notarized, we sent to DDEC, and we came back a month later and did it again with the correct information, with the correct people on the commission. Now, DDEC's kind of wondering, "Why in the hell are you sending me two?" We never answered that question. And we held a public meeting, and it was a specific procedure on how you get permits approved. You hold the public meeting. We did that. Mr. Waller created the meeting, we sent letters to all the residents, two people showed up, me and somebody else. Not one of the residents around it came. So we had a fifteen-minute meeting at five-thirty to five-forty-five, then we had the regular meeting, and we approved the damn thing. That's not the way it works. You need forty-five days between the time you hold that meeting to the time you approve it. Not only on phase one, you have to have it on phase two. And phase two is going to get trapped into the same nonsense. My estimate is, if you hold that public meeting sometime in September, add forty-five days to it, you're in November. If we let it drift to October, you're in December. Repeat the exact same process of not doing what we're supposed to do. And the other thing I want to talk about with that, we had the records over to the county office building. Mr. Waller agreed to take them and scan them. I've asked multiple times to get access to some of those records, either electronically or physically. I've got two responses.
Asked who?
I'm sorry?
Asked who for those records? Ask, who did you ask for those records?
I've asked you for them.
I've never gotten a request from those.
And you did.
Please show, please show me.
I don't want to argue with you.
Okay, please show me where you requested those, please.
I can prove it, play the emails I sent.
Please.
And you told me that you put them in the bank building. And I asked you specifically, "Why in the hell you did that?" And you told me, "I couldn't go there." The same thing that Mr. Shaver said on the records for the...
Can't wait to see those emails.
Sorry?
Carry on.
Look for yourself.
There's a pattern. You may not like Pat, but she's one of the most intelligent women I've ever met. And that's from my forty-five years of manufacturing experience. She has an encyclopedia memory. She has pieces of paper she could pull out in a heartbeat. You guys want to take her off that committee, either one of them? Have fun, because you're going to die with power. There's nobody on that committee, specifically the Solid Waste, that understands the processes, procedures, and things needed to be done. And Republic's going to run right over you. I can say that for truth. My son worked for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Gingrich.
For those that don't know me, my name is Susan Gingrich. I'm a Loudoun County taxpayer, and I'm an advocate for good government. Chairman Cullen, I will ask that you follow Robert's rules. Let me make my comments. And I'm happy to talk to anybody after the meeting, including elected officials, unless, like you did after the, a certain meeting on the district, threaten me.
That's wrong, but keep going.
I wasn't going to say anything about the Solid Waste Commission, but I have to agree with Rich. I mean, I do either attend the meetings or watch the meetings. The meetings right now are, excuse me for saying this, but a joke. It's clear the person chairing the meetings does not know what he is doing. The members don't do their homework. They don't read the information that is given. And unfortunately, it seems like the chairman and some of the members are better friends with Republic than they are with the person on the commission with them, Pat Hunter. I don't like coming to these meetings, mainly because for many years I've been making public comments in hopes of seeing better government, and this county government has only gotten worse. To avoid attending, I sent an email to my commissioner, hoping he would clarify my issues and answer my questions. As usual, he didn't. And since I have no expectation of this workshop being recorded, or if it is, that parts a specific commissioner dislikes won't disappear. My commissioner, also commission chairman, told me that they were no longer obligated to show meetings online since COVID ended, and I wonder who he heard that from? Once again, I must ask, that living in Teleco Village, what am I getting for the county taxes I pay? And certainly, I'm not getting a useful county website and no helpful county newsletter either. I have copies of my email and Commissioner Cullen's reply for anyone desiring them. I did give some of you some information. I asked to see Commissioner Shaver's draft resolution pertaining to the Loudoun County Economic Development Agency, which legally should have been included with the agenda items posted online. I told Chairman Cullen that I opposed the direction Shaver was leading them into and got a Shaver-type reply. I also asked about Shaver's item removing Pat Hunter from two committees, which were accurately commissions, even though on agenda said committees. He also replied in true Shaver manner, stating in effect that he had no idea what it was about, and the state sunshine law prevented him from discussing items on the agenda with commissioners. I had a good laugh over that one, because I know better. Some elected officials, including some here tonight, act like they are above the law, local, county, state, and federal. They even violate the policies and procedures of the bodies they sit on. The days of Mr. Smith goes to Washington, where elected politicians run to help taxpayers instead of themselves, rarely exist here in Loudoun County. You up there and other elected officials in this room have seen Commissioner Shaver be unreasonably rude and crude to Ms. Hunter, also without giving her a chance to defend herself. None of you stood up for her. I expect my elected officials to be leaders, not followers, especially of a bully like Van Shaver. If you fear him, you don't deserve to represent your constituents. And by the way, besides Pat Hunter being a woman, a county-appointed official, she is also Shaver's constituent. Do you treat your constituents like that? I fear some of you do. It is sad that this county operates on fear, and if certain elected officials don't like you, despite doing an excellent job, you are out of the door, and the big bonuses are reserved for those who unquestionably follow orders, be they legal or non-harm. I suspect I'll hear distortions and half or no truths about Pat Hunter from either Shaver or other commissioners who blindly follow him. Notice, she isn't here. And why would she want to be, knowing that Shaver will monopolize the meeting as he is permitted to do and carry on? Among other things, you might be able to tell this, I write, and I had an opinion piece published in the statewide Tennessee Conservative newspaper in March. The title was, "The So What Women Versus the Good Old Boys of Loudoun County." It relayed the shenanigans of certain county commissioners and elected officials. If you haven't read it, I have copies with me tonight, and you're welcome to take them. It is a little long, but you probably won't fall asleep. Once again, as I've asked before, you know, I've made comments for years and years and years, and it's like nobody listens. Nothing gets better, nothing improves. But please, do the right thing for taxpayers who deserve accountability from their county government. Make sure you do your own homework, and don't let Mr. Shaver lead you down the garden path. I have grave concerns about how the pandemic relief funds were spent. There was a recent article, and I have the article, in a statewide newspaper titled, "Rutherford County May Have Used Pandemic Relief Funds to Build Hardened Facilities Without Approval." Now, I'm not saying the situation here is exactly the same, but I do think that using those funds to pay for legal fees in support of Commissioner Shaver's vendetta against Lenore City doesn't sound quite right to me. It won't be Commissioner Shaver or you, the elected officials, who will pay for mistakes. It will be all the county taxpayers. And I ask you, Pat Hunter deserves your support. She has done a lot for this county. She knows more than any of you up there, and she's always willing to help and to do what's best, and most of all, to ask that everyone follow the law. You know, is that too much to ask? Thank you for listening.
Let the record show tonight. Ms. Gingrich sent me that email Saturday night, I believe, the eighteenth, and I replied within an hour. She asked about the EDA. I said that was an agreement that went back years ago, the inter-local agreement. We fund them at $177,000 a year and get very little in return. We did, as a commission, send them a two-year withdrawal notice, but I also told her, I believe we will resolve the issue and update the inter-local agreement. And she asked about Commissioner Shaver's item on the agenda. Remember, tonight's a workshop, it's not a voting meeting. Commissioner Shaver is a duly-elected commissioner from the fifth district. He is able to bring issues before the commission. I do not know what's behind it, and I told her, I don't sit here and make phone calls and ask what everybody's doing. I'd be damned if I'm going to spend...
You didn't say that in the email.
I did here.
I have copies of it, if anybody wants to...
I'm reading it right off, so one I sent you. I don't know what's behind, as you know, the sunshine law prevents me from discussing items on the agenda with the commissioners. We have to wait until you get here.
But what didn't you answer? I asked you why that resolution was not in the packet as it's...
Because it's here tonight, it's a workshop.
Why didn't the public get to see it?
It'll be there on the voting meeting.
No, by law, it's required to be there now.
It is not. This is a workshop. It'll go to the voting meeting. So I responded to you. I'm sorry it didn't meet your expectations, but I did reply to you, so correct the records.
I said you replied, it's just you didn't give me a full reply.
I gave you what I knew at the time, and I said I don't call the commissioner. She's here tonight, that resolution will be up.
I'm sorry, let's move along.
Monty Ross.
Yes, my name's Monty Ross, I live in Lenore City, and I am the representative on the Solid Waste Commission for Lenore City, and I'm just... There, it's, so I'm here tonight to, I'm going to just go ahead and read what I have so that I don't get distracted here. Says, and I started out with, I understand there are rumblings about removing Pat Hunter from the Loudoun County Solid Waste disposal, and now I know that this is actually happening. I'm here tonight to speak not just on her behalf, but on my perspective of how this newly-appointed commission is working. I have been so impressed by this commission, Gary Bush, David Hall, Larry Rollins, Adam Waller, and Pat Hunter. We are working very well together. I would like to appeal to the county commission to step back and let us do our work. Pat Hunter brings historical knowledge and content knowledge to the table. We collaborate well together, discuss the issues, and even at times, agree to disagree, but we are overall moving forward. What I see is a commission with members who have qualified to do the work, are working well together, and who are independent of each other in making the best decisions for the people of Loudoun County. In my previous jobs and appointed positions, one of the responsibilities in all these positions is to make sure we are proceeding to avoid personal agendas that would potentially send the stakeholders to litigation. Please do not listen to those who have done damage to this commission before and continue, for whatever reason, to try to stand in the way of getting the work done. There has been an element of political intrusion that interferes with what we are trying to do for the public good. This Loudoun County Solid Waste Disposal Commission is perfectly capable of ensuring a standard of integrity and trust among ourselves and in our relationships with the public and entities we must work with. Please respect us and let us do the work we are tasked to do. Respectfully, Monty.
Thank you.
Ma'am, with all due respect, I've had two members of the commission that you're speaking of come to me and say, she's unreasonable, we can't work with her, and they're willing to resign. So I don't think everything's as kosher as you say.
Well, I would be surprised. I might think of one who might say that, but I can't think of two.
That concludes public comments. Rodney Grubin.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thanks for having me, giving me time tonight to update your own tourism program in Loudoun County. Our mission, inspire and empower our visitors to come and explore Loudoun County. By doing that, we also want to keep the same cultural feel that we've had in Loudoun County through the years, and we want to keep it that way. Where have we been? We started rebuilding the tourism program from ground zero in January of 22. Since that time, in conjunction with our marketing company, we've come up with a whole new look, and we're very proud of what we've done so far and looking forward to the future. We've come up with new branding guidelines, all new fonts, iconography, and color palettes to go with everything that we're using, and we think that will go a long way with putting our brand out there where it needs to be. And a new website. This is a great undertaking. With that, we've added some items to that, all new photos that we've started on. We have a conversation corner that we talk with local entrepreneurs and craftsmen. That is a great addition to it. It tells our story quite well. And then we also have an online store where you can purchase, visit Loudoun County items. Our photo shoots, since we started last fiscal year, we've conducted four major photo shoots and three smaller ones. We have updated all of our photos, we're working on our videos, so that will go hand in hand with what we're doing for marketing in 23, 24. Additionally, accomplishments since the first of 22. The key there, building relationships, I think that is the key to what we want to try to do moving forward. Better financial stewards of the money that we are allocated, new marketing plans, lower overhead, grant funding, and stakeholder emails. Those are all part of the program that we want to move forward with. So where are we going? Twenty-three, twenty-four. We developed some goals for 23, 24, and we're going to use those goals to drive what we want to accomplish. Instead of being everything to everyone, we want to be something to someone. That's what we're going to be working for. One of the main goals we have is to maintain our hotel occupancy rate at sixty-five percent or better. Currently, we are right at sixty-five percent, and we hope to maintain that. We went on this road probably five, six years ago, I guess it was, 2017, 2018. The goal was to have an occupancy rate of fifty-eight percent, and we have met that and surpassed that, and we'll continue to do so. Ten thousand pages used on our webpage per month, and we are doing that right now, and hopefully that will continue. We're looking at new data services to be able to track what visitors are doing in the county, how long they're spending here, how much they're spending here, and exactly where they're going. It's kind of creepy on what can be pulled out of the air on some data, but we're going to look at it, and if we can afford it, we're going to do it.
Do you see why I'm going up next door till you don't tell?
Exactly, exactly. Well, I mean, you know, when I go down the road...
I watch you every day, man.
That's right. We want to be relevant, and we want to preserve what Loudoun County is to each and every one of us. And we want to try to implement that new data services and analysis visitor tracking this fiscal year, if at all possible. That is our main goal. One of the things we just rolled out is the barbecue trail challenge here in Loudoun County. With that, we're working with four of our restaurants, Smokin' F, Sunsmoke, Calhoun's, and Taste of Texas. And we've just initiated this program, and what that's designed to do is to increase the time that is spent here in the county by visitors. If we can entice them to take part in this challenge, it'd be kind of hard to eat it all four restaurants in one day. So we want to try to get them back.
Let's try to give it a whirl.
I'm sorry.
Get buddies on there, too, that's something...
Well, that's true, but we started with these four, and we're going from there with it. So this is the start, and this is a program that we can use year-round. This is not something that's one and done. We can keep using this year-round, we're very proud of that. We want more community involvement in what we're doing. We want the community to tell us what they see out there as their needs, and we're going to try to do that by surveying our local residents and talking with stakeholders as much as we can. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Of course, we submitted our request to you all during the budgeting process. Thank you for funding what we requested, which was $120,000 from County Commission. Since 2021, 22 fiscal year, we were spending $58,000 a year at that time on marketing efforts. This budget for FY 23, 24, we're projected to spend over $170,000 just on marketing alone. So through leveraging our grant fundings, organizational cost savings, and the funding that we received from the three municipalities, we are looking to really market Loudoun County as best we can in this fiscal year. We will continue to be good stewards with all the funding that we receive regardless of the source, and we're gonna continue to work hard every day to make Loudoun County a better place. Questions from any?
Last month, your name came up, uh, being a website professional myself, you see. I have taken notes of how much you all have added to your web presence. We've had this going around down here for a long time about our website, not enough information. Mr. Moore sitting right back there has been real involved and real interested and want to have more and more. I told Mr. Moore, the people that's got it going on, website right now is the chamber. You all have more stuff going on yours right now than anything we've got anywhere local to. Holler at you sometime. He has a great interest in what all things are available internet wise, but yes, you all have. In fact, I saw an agenda for a meeting today that I have never seen an agenda for in my whole life.
There you go.
Kudos on that one, man. I don't know how you got that one.
Takes a little digging.
I'll bet it did.
It did.
But yeah, y'all, the website's good. Rest of it's great.
Thank you.
Those people, encourage them, make sure you encourage them to come in, visit, spend a little money, and leave.
That's what we want.
Don't take a present.
That's what we want.
Yeah, man.
That's our goal. Any other questions? Comments?
Heard a lot of positive feedback on the website.
Thank you.
Well, there's a lot of positive things going on with the chamber. I'm on that board now, and, um, it's very refreshing to sit down in a room full of people that all have a great vision for Loudoun County, and they've got a way to achieve their goals. I really enjoy being a part of that.
Just takes a little bit of work. Hang on.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Rosemary Quillen.
Okay, you should have in your, um, information, the proclamation that we talked about last month of, um, get your selfie to school. September is School Attendance Awareness Month, and we, like I said, we did a proclamation from county commission just showing our support to Lounor City and Loudoun County schools. So that is in there for your review, and hopefully that'll pass at the next meeting, and we can be a part of the countywide initiative for children.
Yeah, did you see it on your iPad there?
Yes.
I think you're lying, man. I don't see no iPad.
Oh, and one more, one more thing I want to mention. There's, um, a ball game coming up Friday.
Sorry.
Battle of the Bridge.
Sorry for your loss.
And let us win the food drive. We're gonna take it all. We already know. But, um, of course, we always have the countywide food drive, um, that will go to Good Samaritan Center. So if you want to donate canned goods or money, that would be great. Uh, that's a great cause.
And where do people drop the canned goods off at the cat?
They can, they can drop them off at Lounor City Hall.
Okay.
That's one, or the, the high school also.
Just everybody from here to state of Lounor City, is what you're saying?
I don't know.
Or Loudoun.
Yeah, Loudoun.
But we're coming.
There's gonna be a food drive on Friday. There won't be vegetable bar.
She's so afraid she wouldn't even order.
No, no, no.
Orange and black.
I didn't want to be too intimidated, but we're coming. That's all I've got.
We will put that proclamation under Buddy's name for the September 5th commission meeting. Just, okay. Commissioner Satterfield.
Um, Robert Williams is gonna be here, is here, and he is going to speak to the commission about, uh, property over on 321, and so I won't muddy the waters. That's all I'm gonna say. Robert, if you come out the top of us.
This is a subject that I got involved with twenty-some odd years ago, and I thought it had happened. If you will look, I believe that we put this in the packet. That identifies the property. It's where the check marks at. And it's back in the early twenties when they had Loudoun 321, while they purchased a lot of property. They purchased some of my property, and I was involved with them. And this particular property, they purchased from William Hildreth, which is Bill Hildreth's son. And in the process of working with them, and I bought some property from Bill Hildreth, William Hildreth, that he said he did not want that property back if the sheriff offered to sell back to him. And I asked to state at that time if they could donate that to the county, because the possibilities of it would be great. Could have a community center, senior citizens, citizens, settle out of office, or many, many ways that the county could use this property, and they said they could. I got the people in touch with each other, and I was told that it happened. I never thought any more about it, other than, well, that belongs to the county. And then when the city come up that you was building a new high school up on Highway 11, I looked at that, they look like they built a lot of extra dirt there, and they may or may not be, and that's just my opinion. And I thought, well, this would be a good time for them to start the process on this property if we're ever gonna do anything with it, to fill the property. So I called Mr. Satterfield, and I talked to him about it, that I'd like to see him build a senior citizens building their community center or something, if we could get funds to do that with. And through the process of, he said, Mr. Schaefer was looking at, into who, have we owned the property that you were surprised that we did own the property. Well, to my surprise, I got back involved in it. To my surprise, we do not own that property. It's still in the state of Tennessee. I got, went back to the people on Strawberry Plains Pike and talked to them. The gentleman that I talked to has since retired. They put me in touch with the Whitney Major's who is over that department, very nice lady. And she was traveling at that time, and she called me back that day, before that day was in, and she said she would not have anything like that online. She would have to check it when she got back. When she got back the office, she called me, and she had no recollection of this anywhere in the paperwork. So I have no earthly idea what happened to it at that time. My question was to her at that time, I said, can that happen today? Can this be donated to the Loudoun County, this excess property? And she said, yes, it could be. So she, when she sent me, she sent me an application. I have a copy of that application with me to do that. And if you look at the second map, second page of that, is, is a map there that I went on Google Earth, and I've kind of measured it out. This is just a guess, uh, that it would be 79,000 square feet there, that's close to acre, acre point seven, acres nine eight of it. And I feel like the county could use that sometime as a future, that we could get funds to do to do that with. I also give the lady up there a copy of the, all the information of Whitney Major's, her, uh, numbers, her email, and all of that. So it's going back 20 years of my memory, so I try to answer any question that you might have.
Bob, uh, as you said, we've talked about this time to you. I read through all that stuff you sent. The TCA part was quite lengthy, uh, and I kept looking for where it would say they would donate the property. All I could ever find is we had to pay fair market value, and depending on the value of the property, that would determine how much the application fee, it worked from $500 to $10,000 for the application fee. Now, I'm not opposed to this in any means. A lot more would have to be thought out. What I would like to do is get Billy Pickle involved, as, as he's our highway guy, and this is on two highways right here, and get him to be a part of this. He has more, uh, he has more contact with TDOT than, than any of us does have. So he could find out, would they give it to us, what's gonna be involved, and maybe, ease the door open a little bit for us instead of cold calls, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Well, if I went through this application, and it is a generic application, I think that, uh, all the con, I would like for someone with the county and the commission or the mayor's office to contact Mr. Major's and talk to her about it, and on the process of the application.
Sandy Shore. That's Sandy Shore right there beside it, right? Sandy Shore goes into Fort Allen Estates number two.
I'm sorry?
Sandy Shore is what goes into Fort Allen Estates number two.
That's right.
Allen Shore's number one, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. But contact her and talk to her before we fill out the application and see what she is. I'm just telling you about the conversation that we had, that she said it could happen. And I noticed on the application that one of the, one of the categories for the figure of fee is zero to $10,000. There's a $500 fee on that. So there, there's very 99% chance that there would be a zero figure on that if, if we hand that through her. And this is, this is her responsibility, and so this is her area. So if we could just get the county to, the commission or somebody with the mayor's office to contact her and start that process.
Let's, let's get Bob to look at this. Let me, or you want to send this information to Bob and have him to look it over and then make contact Billy Pickle in the mayor's office?
Will you leave that application with Chairman Cullen?
Yes.
And we'll see that it gets to the mayor's office.
But the inquiry would have to come from the county, uh, not as an individual.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll work on it. Like I say, we'll get Bob to look at it, see what, how, how he defines about costs or that sort of stuff, and we'll go take it from there. As far as owning the property, it's right adjacent to, for those of you that may or may not, it's right adjacent to where they, that vacant lot between the two, uh, Fort Allen Estates are, that used to have all the equipment on it all the time. It's down here on one corner of that far end.
Toward the water pump, or the sewer pump.
Sewer pump. And I'm looking right there. You can kind of see the sewer pump. I think that's it on the front of the yellow line, I think, at the pump station, yeah.
Well, it's, it's right across the road from Bob's storage business there on the other side.
We'll get, well, I'll send what you sent me, the whole TCA, and ask Bob to look at it and see, uh, what would be involved and what would be the process to take forward.
Yeah.
We'll get it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. So you did a much better job with that than I could. You knew all the history of it.
I don't know about that.
You had all the history on it. Yes, sir.
You know, I sold peanuts for 39 years.
Yeah, and they were good, and see.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whitfield.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to talk a little bit about this 21 acre. It's a corporate park drive. A lot of us didn't know that, that the county owned this property. Um, it's right next door to Morgan and Olson. Uh, it's 21 acres, and there is a, a pretty large, um, power line system that runs up through it. So I, I don't know a whole lot that we can do with it, but I, I just want to make everybody aware that we own it. We have it. Uh, it's sitting there, it's right in the middle of the, uh, an industrial park, that we may want to do a little bit of investigation, see if we want to get this thing on the market and sell it, or we want to put a building on. You know, exactly what we want to do, do with it. I think for years and years, this thing's just been sitting here dormant, um, and it's just time to do something with it. So I just want to bring it to everybody.
We have a realtor on board here. We're not gonna get hurt. Just take a peek and see, maybe a rough estimate.
Yeah.
I got a feeling it's probably got some value to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have an address, or it's, you just know it's on Corporate Park?
We can, I can get you an address.
Yeah, get that to me. I'll look at it.
It has a good portion of road frontage, too.
It does, definitely.
It's right behind Fire Hall, isn't it? And the Fire Hall vacant lot.
It backs up to it. It kind of comes to a point, you know, where the Fire Hall is.
So it's there. I think we, we need to at least investigate and see what the value is, and we'll see what, what the, what the commission would like to do with this property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schaefer.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, just to answer one question that was asked earlier tonight, the reason you didn't have the draft resolution is because I didn't write it Saturday night, so it's been a little hard for you to have it. But I passed it out earlier to everybody. You got a copy of it. All I'm asking, please take a look at it. You want to change anything, add anything, do anything for it? Basically, the crux of it is, the county's paying set, nearly 70% of the cost to operate the EDA. That includes the salaries of all the employees that the county's footing. The goal here would be that if a conflict arises between the cities and the counties, that the county would take precedent over whatever the case may be. In this case, it's been about annexation. Uh, the EDA has been very instrumental in helping the cities with their annexations. Uh, right now, we have the issue down in Hossius Valley, where, uh, we have now learned that the, what am I supposed to say? The Republic of China has now apparently invested heavily in that 400 acres, but EDA and Mr. Qualls been working with the city of Loudoun and try to find some kind of weird workaround and try to get that included into the city of Loudoun. Mr. Qualls was here one night, and I think we made it clear to Mr. Qualls, we were opposed to that. Uh, so in a case like that, I would think the county has a little more weight than the cities do, since we're paying 177,000, and Loudoun's paying 39, and Lounor City's paying 35. So read the resolution over. If you got any changes you want to make, any updates, any, whatever you want, just, just send them to me, and I'll, I'll include them in whatever you want. But I, I would like to have this on the agenda for the September meeting. Thank you, oh, thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, I've got one quick question.
I'm ready.
Um, I mean, are you prepared to go ahead and write this resolution? We just formed a committee.
Yeah, let's wait.
To work together.
Well, the committee meets Thursday.
They meet Thursday.
And if, if we don't need to do this between now and September the 5th, we'll just pull it back. I've already pulled it back once, so I don't have a bitter problem.
I think we've got to give this committee.
I'm all for it.
Just sit down and try to.
I've got a lot of hopes on Mr. Randolph on the far end down there. He's gonna pull a rabbit out of a hat.
Okay. So, I mean, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm fine.
Give the committee an opportunity to do a job.
I agree.
We'll see how, we'll see how the process and the progress goes with that. First, it'd be, I mean, y'all understand a little season aren't participating, so.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping they can change that also.
Well, I hope so. Chase, Chase can do it.
No pressure.
B, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm going to take full responsibility of recommending Ms. Hunter to the two committees, boards previously, the Solid Waste and the Public Records Committee. Obviously, that was a mistake on my part, contrary to what some people say. I do make mistakes occasionally. On the September 5th meeting, I'll take full responsibility to make a recommendation, have her removed from both of those boards. That's all.
Can I ask a question on, so do those committees that Pat Hunter sits on, do they, do they not, do they get to vote her off of the committees? Or does Buddy get to remove her since he owned her, or?
We, we are the ultimate.
We can reach in the committees and remove people.
They can't, nobody can't go on even one of them without the county commission's approval.
But can county commission reach on committees and remove people?
I guess, ma'am. The power to appoint includes the power to remove.
Okay, so there's not another process? We can just go in?
We did it last September. Remember?
Yep. I'm thinking.
Solid waste.
Oh, yeah.
We remove them all.
Okay.
Except Pat.
Okay, I'll put it on 95.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, during the budget committee, the following things were recommended by the budget committee. And there was a request for additional funding for the new school building, uh, $3 million, which we would need to go and, and get that for. There was also a request from the Sheriff's Department for funding for a camera system at the jail. This would be funded through the jail bond. There was a consideration of recommendation to approve the nonprofit contribution to Greenback East Sports from ARPA. This is the second reading, 5,000 from District 3 and 5,000 from District 4, Mr. Satterfield and Mr. Whitfield. There was a consideration of ARPA resolutions, the slash appropriations for District 4, Mr. Whitfield, $311,000 and $311,672 for paving of county roads, and $380,118 of paving of county roads from District 6, Mr. Waller. There was also ARPA resolution for Beauty for Ashes to be divided between Mr. Morrison and Mr. Schaefer of a total of $73,000. There was a consideration of two grants with no matching funds. The first one was a computer grant with the election office for $2,430. The second one was an SRO grant of $675,000 for the sheriff's office. And then there were considerations, consideration of approval for line adjustments or amendments in County General Fund, which included the revenue and expenses for the election grant and revenue for the SRO grant. And then in the ARPA fund, Fund 127, it included the ARPA resolutions that I stated earlier. There are amendments in Fund 141, which is general purpose school, Fund 142, school federal projects, Fund 143, central factory of that. And then General Capital Projects Fund 171, which included the camera system and the internet upgrade that I spoke about earlier for the Sheriff's Department. And then in Education Capital Projects Fund 177, the, this was an amendment to put in the expense budget for the previous $2.6 million that the county has already received for the new school building. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, I'd like to, if you don't mind, one of the longest times we spent in budget tonight was pretty exciting. It's complicated, but we're going to get there, and that's the court clerk's office is in the process of establishing an upper end office.
County clerk.
Yeah, county court clerk. Riley Wampers Group, license plate, driver license plate and stuff. I think it's been needed for a real long time, and I'm going to tell you, he and Tammy have put a lot of time and energy in trying to find a place to do it. There are several locations that would be really good, but you can't get people to return a phone call. We're looking at the possibility of a lease, short termish. We're looking at the possibility of potentially purchasing a property somewhere. We're looking at the possibility of moving into the Roman State facility that we already own. So there's a lot of options out there, and like I say, they have put a lot of effort into what all the possibilities are. And that's just for our newspaper. That's a big deal right there if we can have us a upper end court clerk, court clerk's office by all means. So I appreciate Tammy and Riley working so hard getting that put together. Hopefully, that'll be coming back to everybody in the near future for some kind of a, of a answer.
Yeah, I think it would help traffic right here.
It would solve a lot. It'd take over half of it out of here, probably more. That, and of course, we're to the limits here. So what do you do? Do you go somewhere, build a new building for this whole thing? Or do you open up there and take half the business that way and solve your problem here? There are some challenges. We can't do everything at once. It'll take some years to get everything moved up there, but of course, the big demand, of course, license plates. That'll be the first thing, and a few other things will add up there immediately once it gets underway. You want to say anything about Tammy?
I just, we have put a lot of work into it, trying to find something that's accommodating for the county, and that'll be beneficial for all the taxpayers.
I think all of us have caught ourselves when I do them driving around looking.
Go on, Bonnie, go some time. What about if Walmart took their arcade section?
They won't call us back.
They won't return a phone call.
They got two, they have two empty slots now. We love it.
Contacted 30 different offices. Really?
They will not. I even talked to Lori.
Okay.
And she said, let me know, let me, they've talked to Lori. They will not contact back. Because there is one county that has their parks off of Jefferson County, and they said it's worked great for them.
I think it would. But it's not Lori. It's the corporate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, she, I think she, she can't.
Lori's helped me get contact and from.
My favorite spot is up at Tractor Supply, up on the upper side, down from the boot place. There's, there's actually four or six. There's four empties up there right now. They won't call you back. You will not get a phone call back from anybody to tell you what their cost is. But everything on 321 was running anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000 a month, which is, which is high. But our goal, I think, all along would be, that would be a short term if we lease. It'd be short term, because it's going to be a success. Ultimately, we want to have our own facility. So that's, that's good. We're happy about that.
Chairman, I was asked to make mention Senator Marshall Blackburn will be in Loudoun tomorrow at Bethany Church at 8 o'clock. If you were interested to go talk to her.
AM.
AM.
AM. That comes twice a day. 8:30, 8:00.
8:00. Bethany Church tomorrow.
Anything else?
We can't vote, but I'll make mostly a adjourn.
Adjourn. Consider adjourn.